Good evening and welcome to our June 12th regular school board meeting. At this time, please rise if you are able to join me in the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing to join me in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd like to observe a moment of silence for Executive Assistant Janet D. and for payroll supervisor Joyce Peterson, district office employees who passed away recently. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone, and good evening, school board. Before we get started, I will call the meeting to order. Is there are no additions or deletions to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Motion by Suchin and a second by Bianca. All those in favor of approving the agenda as outlined, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Now we come to one of our most favorite parts of the agenda, our recognition portion. At this time, I would like to welcome FCC LA Advisor Mia Batastone to the podium to introduce us to the Eastview High School FCC LA national qualifiers.
All right. Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Mia Batastone and I'm a family consumer science educator in FCC LA, Family Career and Community Leaders of America Advisor at Eastview High School. Although we are the only chapter in District 196, we are happy to be the largest chapter in the high school chapter in the state. Thank you for having us come before you to recognize the accomplishments of our FCC LA chapter members. FCC LA ultimate leadership experience equips members with real-life world skills through family and consumer science education. FCC LA prepares members for careers through its four career pathways: human services, hospitality and tourism, education and training, and visual arts and design. We strive to help out with the needs of our school and community by participating and leading community service projects throughout the year and competing in competitive events. Students taking action with recognition, or STAR events, are competitive events in which members compete at the regional, district, state, and national levels. Students are recognized for their proficiency and achievement in chapter and individual projects, leadership skills, and career preparations. STAR events allow chapter members to compete individually or as a team. There are more than 30 STAR events students can choose, can compete in, all of which recognize participants who demonstrate their knowledge, skills, and abilities to actively identify an issue concerning families, careers, or communities, research the topic in development and implement a project to advocate for a positive change. We have had great success at our state conference and at the national level despite many members not being able to compete due to it being our spring break. We are excited that the following members have advanced to the national conference in Denver, Colorado, this July 2nd through the 7th. Digital STAR event, chapter website, Avani Marahada, Sahithi Atlari. Instructional video, Hemaney Mandal. Digital Stories for Change, Miley Marie Charles. Food Innovations, Ria Rajul, Macadella Tessify. Chapter Service Display, Andrea Alfaro, Wendy Boteng. Leadership, Riley Hetlin. Chapter in Review Portfolio, Radiate Million, Anu Malvaranan, Christine Joseph. Leadership, Christine Joseph. Chapter Service Display, Kendall Thielan and Naomi Cook. Sustainability, Avani Marahada. Nutrition and Wellness, Sahithi Atlari. Chapter Service Portfolio, Amira Abdikarhi. Teach Our Train, Kajol Bal. If we have members and family members in attendance, can you please stand to be recognized as well? Thank you, board, for the invitation.
Fantastic. Next, I would like to welcome Unified Basketball Advisors Janelle Millison and Matt Moore to the podium to introduce us to the Unified Basketball State Champions.
Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Janelle Millison and I am the co-advisor of the Unified Team at Eagan High School along with Matt Moore. The Unified Team allows students with and without intellectual disabilities to participate together in activities sponsored by Special Olympics throughout the school year. The students present today are...
Well, he's the one wearing the coolest shoes and he's always open for a three, Jack Gohar. We have two young leaders of many talents, always willing to lend a helping hand in words of encouragement. Our managers, Lydia Frome and Kennedy Carstensen. We have a young man who's always flying high to the rim, Louis Hurd. We have a young man who's always hungry for a win, Elijah Sorensen. He throws TDs on the football field, wins state championships on track, and calls TOs on the court, Brooklyn Evans.
The Unified Basketball Team has won their second state championship in two years. The students, coaches, and managers worked hard to practice, build relationships, and work together to earn this achievement. We are extremely proud of these students and honored to be part of the Unified Movement.
And in closing, we also want to thank our Director of Special Education, Janet Femen, and our Cluster Supervisors for their encouragement and support of the Unified Program. None of this would have been possible without the support of our school community, including the Eagan High School Administration. In particular, Dr. Tara Headlin has been instrumental in the development and success of our program. So thank you all for your support and for recognizing the Unified Team.
Wonderful. Next on the agenda, I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Okay, we have a lot of celebrations to talk about tonight. First off, I'd like to recognize our graduates and to congratulate the class of 2023. It was a joyous last couple of weeks celebrating more than 2,100 students who completed this important educational milestone. The commitment to education and perseverance of this class is truly incredible. We hope the skills they learned from their time in District 196 will serve them well. And I think we had some particularly lovely graduations this season, from small celebrations to the large celebrations of our bigger high schools. We are proud of them all and wish them the best in the future. And congratulations to the Dakota United Hawks adapted softball teams on their top finishes at the Minnesota State High School League State Adapted Softball Tournament, which took place last week. The PI Division Team successfully defended their state title from last year and the CI Division Team finished state runners-up. We look forward to recognizing them in person at an upcoming school board meeting. And congratulations to the Rosemont High School Girls Softball Team on winning the championship in the Class 4A State Tournament this week. We also look forward to recognizing them soon. And congratulations to the Rosemont High School Boys Track and Field Team who are in first place this weekend at the Minnesota State High School League State Championships. There were also many individual top finishers from District 196 and we will celebrate their success at another school board meeting in the future. And congratulations to the Eagan High School Boys Tennis Team on qualifying for and competing in the state tournament last week. And all of those celebrations for our students, I do want to take a moment to celebrate a couple of the adults of 196. So if Tom Pedterston and Sally Soliday could just stand up for a quick minute. Tom and Sally came to us from Bemidji State University and I think that kind of bound them in some ways so that they are going to be retiring at the end of this month. And I just had to take a moment to publicly acknowledge Tom and... I'm gonna get kind of emotional, but Tom is our Director of Human Resources and has been in that position for actually a few decades now, all told. And Sally has been working, she was principal of Echo Park Elementary and has been in the Director of Elementary Education role. And there are too many, too many things I could say, but I think the most important is just that you left us better than you found us and we're so, so very grateful for your years of service to this district and will miss you terribly. And thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is our special communication requests. We do have one speaker signed up for special communication requests. Stakeholders who want to speak during special communication requests must submit a form at least five days in advance of the meeting. Speakers receive up to four minutes to share comments and they may not allot their time to others. We use a timer for public comment. When the light on the podium turns amber, you have 30 seconds remaining and we expect speakers to finish their remarks when their time expires. Speakers are also reminded not to share specific concerns or complaints regarding specific employees or to make inappropriate comments. Violation of the special communication guidelines may result in a speaker being ruled out of order. Opinions shared during the public comment portion of the meeting do not necessarily represent the views of the school board or the district. The audience is expected to not disrupt speakers from being heard. Lastly, the special communication portion of our board meeting is a time for speakers to be heard and the board to listen and reflect. As such, the board does not respond to speakers after their remarks. Speakers, when you come to the podium, please state your name and connection to the school district. Our first and only speaker signed up tonight is Mr. Marcus Johnson. I'd like to welcome you to the podium, sir.
All right. Good evening. My name is Marcus Johnson and I'm the father of two boys that go to the school district Diamond Path and now Scott Elementary Middle School. So I'm speaking, I brought my two sons here tonight just because I wanted to go over a topic and have them listen to their dad speak about truth. What is truth by definition? That is which is true or in accordance with the fact or reality. We've also heard people use the phrase "my truth." If one's truth is referring to how they feel, that is not the same thing as truth. You've heard another word, obviously inclusion. We can all do a better job of being inclusive, but that doesn't mean you change the truth. You tell it like it is and if it offends someone, then it's that, that's person's choice to be offended. We must always live in reality and this is why I cannot sit idly by while our children are deceived and to believe in that there are more than males and females in this world. Proverbs 10, verse 32 says, "If you..." Excuse me. "If you obey in the Lord, you will always know the right thing to say, but no one will trust if you tell lies." Tonight, I'd like to discuss the video Puberty in You that was presented to the boys and girls in fifth grade and teacher lesson plans which everyone should go back and read. I explored all the material and I found several things that were problematic. At the beginning of Puberty in You, it reveals that puberty is a time when kids become adults, when it happens to be people who identify as boys, girls, neither, both, or transgender. What I don't understand is why confuse the kids about one's feelings versus the biology? Because it's supposed to be a science demonstration. Even little kids recognize there are boys and girls. Sex and gender are binary. A male has a penis, produces semen, has thicker bone density, and has XY chromosomes. A female has a vagina, has the potential to give birth, has excess chromosomes, and experiences menstrual cycles. Males on average are faster, stronger, and can jump higher. If you look at the Eastview Track and Field records posted, the women's high jump was the high, the record's 5'2" and the men's is a whopping 6'11". Males account for all records in track and field. Men and women are physically different in every way. Only a male sperm and a female's egg can produce babies. The CDC believes in sex being binary, as does any OBGYN. Gender can be determined as early as 10 weeks from a pregnant mother using blood tests. The video keeps insisting that somehow at the time of the birth, they are assigned at male or female. No gender is, no, sorry, gender is determined at the time the sperm meets the egg. Your gender cannot be changed or assigned. Binary and genders are feelings, not the truth. Moving on from the video, you should check out the teachers packet. If you, it's not in the video, but there's a section and it says, there's a part in there that says, "All students have access to menstrual pads in the school bathroom." I would like for you to explain how my biological son would be able to use a menstrual pad. This is ridiculous and should be removed from the information. The second one I found was separating children by gender reinforces a binary notion of sex. Sex and gender are binary. There are only males and females. If you go along with this lie that boys can be girls and girls can be boys, then you don't believe in the truth. Trusted parent was the other one I was concerned about. It says, "My question is, how do you define what a trusted parent is? Is that one that doesn't believe in biology but ideology? Does this person believe in God? What if the parent doesn't line with your morals? How do we determine who is a trusted parent? For my wife and me, we are the only trusted parents." Okay? Because your personal beliefs and misconceptions, sorry, should not interfere.
All right. That concludes our special communication portion of the agenda. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have 31 items on the consent agenda today. We have appointments to the Budget Advisory Council, appointments to the Legislative Advisory Council, district memberships for 2023-24, official newspaper for 2023-24, minutes of the May 8th regular school board meeting, minutes of the May 9th regular special school board meeting, minutes of the May 17th special school board meeting, gifts, grants, advertising revenue, treasurer's report for April 2023, summary of claims for April 2023, schedule of investments for April 2023, revenues of expenditure report for April 2023, Rosemont Elementary School 2023 boiler replacement, Northview Elementary School 2023 boiler replacement, 2022-23 spring budget adjustments, managed detection and response monitoring solution, personnel, employment agreements, employment agreements probationary, pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time employees, workers' compensation insurance, agreements for student teaching experience, UW-Stout School of Education, clinical school counseling experience, University of Nebraska at Kearney clinical experience, shift-to-work-side wellness, joint powers agreement, non-public school counseling service agreements, policy 705, audit and annual comprehensive financial report, administrative regulation 801.5 AR, community use of district facilities, resolution with Minnesota State High School League, and expulsion of a student. At this time, are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like to remove? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second?
Motion by Jackie and a second by Joel. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a second, a seven-zero vote. Next up is our reports portion of the agenda. I would like to welcome Tony Taschner and Violetta Hernandez-Espanosa to the podium to discuss our 2023 legislative session review.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger. Violetta and I are here to give a high-level review of the, of most of the education-related legislation to come out of the 2023 session of the Minnesota Legislature that concluded late last month. A photo on this slide shows members of our Legislative Advisory Council who attended our annual District 196 Day at the Capitol in February. And before I go any further, I'll apologize for the length of the presentation. It was, as you'll see, it was a packed session, but it's, it's a much shorter presentation than the 103-slide one that the Minnesota Department of Education gave us, so... So I want to start with some numbers that provide context to what many people called a historic legislative session. We used, we heard that word a lot, the session historic. And in many ways, it was. The session started with a $17 billion budget surplus, much of which carried over from the 2022 session, which produced very little legislation. There were a record 6,705 bills introduced during the 23 session due to that pent-up demand from the previous session. And there were 75 bills signed into law from the session. And one of those is the Omnibus Education Bill. That is a 331-page document. And as I said before, we're going to highlight the big changes in our presentation, but we still have a lot to learn about all the changes that came out of this session. I'll be, I'll be real honest, we don't know everything that came out of the session yet. We, we know topics and we know that there's things to do, but there's a lot of work that we're going to have to do as part of that, so... The, I guess I'll start out with one of the biggest things is the additional funding that's coming out of the session, $2.2 billion in increased funding for education. Initial estimates are that our district, District 196, would receive $23 million in additional funding in fiscal year '24 over the base year, which is this year, and in fiscal year '25, an additional $29 million in funding. So those are the high-level numbers about the session overall. But first, I'm going to step back before we get into any more detail and just talk a little bit more about our process in District 196 with our Legislative Advisory Council, and that's where it begins. That's a nonpartisan group of citizens, staff, students, and school board members. And each year, we start by meeting with members of our Budget Advisory Council and we talk about possible priorities for the session. After we did that, that was in November, we then developed language for the priorities. And I'm sorry, I'm advancing the presentation unfortunately here. And then we ultimately advocated for the priorities that were approved by the school board. So this slide here shows the names of the 26 people who served on the Legislative Advisory Council this year. There are citizen members, there is a representative from each of the other district advisory councils, a student representative from each of our high schools, staff members, and three school board members. I want to take this opportunity to thank the LAC members for engaging in the process this year and advocating for public education and District 196. And if we haven't, I know we have some, or at least one member of the LAC in the audience tonight as well as staff members and board members, if you'd stand and be recognized, Gary. Thank you. We did have a couple of other members. So our advocacy efforts, these, this slide highlights those efforts. These included sharing our district priorities with staff and the public and also in meetings with individual legislators during our day at the Capitol. Staff members also testified on bills and committee meetings. The photo on this slide shows Violetta testifying before a Senate committee fairly early on in the session and she'll talk a little bit more about what that involved. And when the session was over, we invited our local, our 14 local legislators who represent portions of District 196 to our last LAC meeting. Five of them took us up on that invitation and we were very happy to have them there and it was a very productive conversation. And we just asked them to give us their review of the session. So that's kind of in a nutshell what the LAC, our activity, our activities and kind of the process that we followed. The priorities this year were in the areas of funding, local control, and workforce assistance. So this is what we asked for and there's some real familiar items on there, you'll notice. As we have for the last several years, we asked the legislature to provide adequate, stable, and predictable funding for education by increasing the General Education Formula by 4% per year and tying future increases to inflation. We also asked the legislature to reduce the Special Education and English Learner Cross Subsidies and also to increase equalization aid. In the area of local control, we asked for no new unfunded mandates and to eliminate unnecessary mandates, like the law that restricts when school districts can start the school year. We also asked the legislature, as we have for the last several years, to give local school boards the authority to renew operating levies that have been approved by voters previously at the same or lesser amount. And our third priority focused on supporting a diverse and sustainable workforce by providing funding to increase the number of teachers of color, by maintaining multiple pathways to teacher licensure, and providing incentives to address staffing shortages in other areas like paraprofessionals and bus drivers. And school districts across the state are all facing those issues. So what did we receive? This slide shows that the legislature agreed to provide significant increases in funding to the General Education Formula allowance, to reduce cross subsidies, and some new funding areas. They also agreed to index future, future general, general education increases to the annual rate of inflation. This should go a long way toward providing the stable and predictable funding that we've been seeking for many years, but I will throw in the caveat, as one of our legislators did, that it will depend on our experience with the new spending that was approved and we'll have to see how that plays out in terms of what the actual cost of those programs will be to school districts. In the area of local control, we asked for fewer mandates, but what we received are more programs and mandates that will increase costs and spending for all school districts, what I just referenced too. One thing the legislature did do was in the area of giving local school boards the authority to approve, or renew, I should say, an operating levy at the same or lesser amount, one time per levy. And in the area of workforce assistance, the state provided additional grant funding designed to increase the diversity of the workforce in Minnesota's public schools. However, the legislature also approved new programs and changes to employment law that may make staffing more challenging for school districts in the future. Now we'll move into some of the details about major funding changes that were approved this session. As I had mentioned before, we asked for increases of 4% and 4% per year and the legislature ultimately agreed to a 4% increase in fiscal '24 and a 2% increase in fiscal '25. This will increase General Education Formula spending by $709 million local or total statewide over the base year, which is again this year. And that will equate to about a $22 million increase over base for District 196 in the area of general education funding. As I mentioned earlier, the legislature agreed to index future General Education Formula funding increases to the rate of inflation as measured by the Consumer Price Index. The increases will be a minimum of 2% per year and a maximum of 3%, but the legislature could always take, always take separate action to provide additional funding. For budgeting purposes, this will be huge because school districts will now know that they will receive at least 2% funding going into the next budget year. As you know very well, school districts, and we're going to be talking about that tonight, need to approve a budget before July 1 each year. That's, that's statutory, that's law. The legislature completed their work on May 22nd. We budget, we do our budgeting work beginning in January and February and even before that. So this will be huge in terms, in terms of providing that stability of at least knowing we're going to get a 2% increase. And it's also very significant because it eliminates the need for us to go down there and spend... and spend time advocating for inflationary increases to what is considered basic funding. So these were major changes that we have been talking about for several years. The Special Education Cross Subsidy, another one of those we've been talking about, and the legislature took action in the session to significantly reduce the state's portion of the cross subsidy beginning next year. For those who may not know, the Special Education Cross Subsidy is the difference between the cost of providing special education services that are mandated by the state and federal government and the funding that we receive from the state and federal government to provide those services. To make up for that difference, districts have had to spend general fund dollars, which took those away from being able to use for other services and programs. In District 196 last year, our Special Education Cross Subsidy was $33 million. In this two-year budget, the state agreed to provide Special Education Cross Subsidy Reduction Aid to reduce the current cross subsidy by 44%. That will cost $663 million total statewide over the base year, and will provide an additional $23 million to District 196 over the next two years. And beginning in fiscal '26, the aid will be increased to reduce the cross subsidy by 50% in the next two-year state budget. Similarly, there's a cross subsidy for the English Learner Program. The legislature agreed to reduce that cross subsidy by providing an additional $87 million total statewide over the base year. Early estimates show that this will provide District 196 with an additional $2.6 million in English Learner funding over the next two years. And as I finish up here with my portion of the presentation by quickly reviewing some of the other funding changes that were approved this session. For several years now, the state has funded a number of voluntary pre-kindergarten seats statewide. In District 196, we currently have funding for 70 of those seats. That means 70 of our students are getting an experience that they wouldn't otherwise if that funding wasn't there. That funding has been renewed by the legislature every two years. What they did this year was to make it permanent. So the 4,000 seats statewide that they have currently, they made those permanent, and in addition to that, they are going to provide funding to increase the number of seats, permanent seats, going forward to more than 7,000 next year, more than 10,000 in fiscal '25, and more than 12,000 in the '26-'27 biennium, and we can and will be applying for some of those additional seats. Early on in the session, the legislature approved the Universal School Meals Bill that did get a lot of attention, so we're all probably pretty familiar with this. The cost is about $2 million per year for this, and it means that every student can receive one breakfast and one lunch per day at no charge. The Student Support Personnel Aid is new funding to support the hiring of additional counselors, psychologists, social workers, and licensed school nurses. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Violetta to talk about the last bullet on this slide, and then move on to policy.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the public, thank you for your attention today. For the record, my name is Violetta Hernandez Espinoza, and I serve the district as Coordinator of Equity and Inclusion. Thank you, Director Toshner, for inviting me as a member of the Legislative Advisory Committee to share with this audience the 2023 legislative outcomes, which, as was mentioned, we are still all processing, along with other districts throughout the state, following the May 22 session adjournment. To conclude the past slides on funding, you'll notice that many grant programs beyond direct district appropriations were adopted this session. There is a highlight on a particular bill called the Increased Teachers of Color Act, or ITCA for short. As this is a bill we've been closely following and directly supporting since the 2021 session as we aim to diversify our teacher workforce in the district. Our district currently benefits from various ITCA-related programs, including the Come Teach in Minnesota program, the Teacher Mentorship and Retention Program, and this year, based on session outcomes, we were just informed that we will be receiving a $750,000 Grow Your Own Grant, finally, to fund 30 unlicensed staff of color to obtain their initial teacher licensure over the next three years, starting this fall. $85-plus million were allocated this session to ITCA-related program financing, and nearly 95% of all ITCA policy proposals were adopted, which is a perfect segue as we move on to cover the policy proposals passed this session, in addition to these ITCA-related policy proposals. While this is what is known as a funding year, in the legislative biennium cycle, many policy proposals were also passed. In fact, such a number were passed that we are still processing all these changes and will likely continue to process them into the summer months as we prepare for implementation. Thus, as Tony mentioned, we are only providing a high-level, definitely not all-inclusive overview of these policies that will impact our district. The following domains we will cover are curriculum, special education, American Indian education, health and safety, student discipline, employment and labor, and others, of course. Okay, the first domain is curriculum. In relation to this, there are a number of changes to standards, graduation requirements, and course content areas, including art, math, science, civics, ethnic studies, and Holocaust and genocide education. One major initiative that passed is the READ Act, which aims to ensure that every child in Minnesota will be reading at or above grade level no later than the end of grade three, including ELL students, based on individualized reading goals. By the 2026-'27 school year, districts must be screening K-3 students twice a year with an MDE-approved screening tool, provide evidence-based reading instruction, provide MDE-approved training to teachers and instructional support staff with responsibility for teaching reading, and provide interventions based on need to improve literacy skills for each student across the state. You will definitely be hearing more about these changes in the future. Okay, in addition to the related funding for special education, which Tony has covered, Director Toshner has covered, special education will also be experiencing a number of implementation changes. These include serving students to age 22, additional professional development for licensed staff and paraprofessionals, some relating to the READ Act provisions, restrictions on use of restrictive procedures, as well as the start of a rulemaking process at the state level on special education student identification. So there will be many changes coming forth in the years to come in this particular domain. American Indian education will also be facing a number of changes. Please keep in mind that our existing American Indian education program staff and district have implemented some of these aspects already, such as allowing the use of regalia or cultural significant items at graduation ceremonies, having a defined American Indian council membership, and our district is currently in the process of implementing a Njibwe language course. In addition to additional funding for American Indian education programs, other policy changes relate to the use of tobacco on school grounds, adoption of Indigenous Peoples' Day, and required programming, embedding history and contributions of American Indian communities in academic standards, and offering of culture and language courses, the latter of which our American Indian education program staff and teaching and learning teams have been continuously working on over the last several years. Next area, on health and safety, there are changes relating to the availability of opiate antagonists, newly required student education relating to an active shooter, suicide prevention and crisis information on student ID cards, lead-in drinking water, nursing mother accommodations, and access to menstrual products. Again, we are already addressing some of these in our district, including access to opiate antagonists and to menstrual products. The legalization of marijuana in Minnesota required action by the state relating to schools, banning its possession or use in public schools, including facilities and vehicles, sales within a school zone, and requires comprehensive cannabis education starting in 2026. There's more. Yes, and a student discipline area. In the last board meeting, you heard from our district's committee reviewing our student behavior regulation and their recommendations to move that work forward. As you may be able to tell by this list that you're seeing in front of you, we were not the only stakeholders interested in addressing this area of work. So a number of changes to student behavior responses are taking place for school districts across the state, including requirements to utilize nonexclusionary policies and practices, which was also a recommendation of that committee. A couple other key changes relate to new requirements on post-suspension readmission plans and alternative education services for students suspended for more than five consecutive school days. In some of these areas, again, we are moving in the right direction and are already, or have already adopted some of these changes. For example, we no longer allow pre-K-2-3 suspensions in our district with some very limited exceptions for safety. The final domain with extensive changes relates to employment and labor. This domain received significant attention this session, not only with the legislature but with many other stakeholders, so I'm pretty sure many of you are aware of some of these changes, some of them being expanded employee benefits, including unemployment benefits for eligible employees relating to summer months, which were made effective May 28, 2023, earned safe and sick time, and paid family and medical leave. Session law also broadened teacher and public employee definitions in PELRA and made changes to teacher retirement accounts. And finally, another policy change that will have significant impact for our district is the ability to renew an operating levy without vote on a one-time basis. We still have some years before this becomes a conversation for our district. From this slide, it's also important to highlight that there are additional gender identity protections per the Minnesota Human Rights Act, a topic which we've been addressing at the district. Also, Juneteenth commemorating the Emancipation Proclamation on June 19 becomes an observed state holiday. This is another item already previously adopted by our district, so I will be taking Monday, we will be taking Monday off. With that, thank you for making it to the end. I'll hand it back to Director Toshner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Violetta. As you can see, there was a lot, and we do have a lot to do still as we move forward. I think, you know, nobody ever should get everything that they want going into a negotiations process, and so there were some things that we would rather have not been approved, but were, but I think the bottom line is that there was good intent on most everything, and students are going to benefit. I think the bottom line is that there are going to be good things happening, additional funding and policy changes that are going to be beneficial for students, and that's what we're here for. So we'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
I mean, Art, for folks who maybe don't follow this as closely as we do, that although this was a really generous session for us, and we got a lot of things that we wanted, it wasn't too long ago when we had 10 years in a row where we got no increase in funding, and we've been digging ourselves out of that ever since. We made millions and millions of dollars in cuts related to that. So while it looks like this was a year where, you know, things were coming up roses for us, we're still digging out, and this sets us, I think it really does, I think they were pretty wise in, you know, adding the inflationary provisions we were asking for and things like that, so we can look forward, as you said, Tony, to predictable funding. That's the big thing for us, it's got to be predictable, so we know what we got to work with every year. But I don't want folks to get the idea that this is what happens every session. This was a very unusual session. I hope it's a harbinger of what's to come, but, you know, we are still digging out from those years and years and years of just not getting any sort of increase at all, so, anyway. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you for making that point, Art, because as I referenced, we have been asking for things for several years and have been talking about how that has forced us to go to our local voters and ask for increases in funding, as we did in 2019, because the state, again, has not been a reliable funding partner. Now, you can't make up everything in one session, but did a lot, and I think tying some future increases to inflation will help a lot.
Sutchen.
Thank you. I just want to first acknowledge and appreciate the Herculean effort to getting from the many slides you got to what you shared, so thank you for that. I also want to acknowledge the relentless commitment of all the educators that have brought us to this moment. It is really through the advocacy and dogged persuasion of years and years of what Art talked about, underfunding, that we've gotten to this stage, and it's incredible, so just very, very grateful for that as well. And as this sets us up to now not only make up for those years of underfunding, it really is helping correct places through which ultimately we can pursue the mission that we have been honored and blessed to have. So this is great. We're looking forward to hearing more as you process more as well, and so just, I wanted to just take this moment to thank everyone who has helped us get to this moment. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Jackie?
Now I can take a deep breath. That was a lot of stuff. Thank you to our Legislative Advisory Council for all their help, thank you for your help. I would just like to ask that we have maybe one, another Legislative Advisory Council report in, before school starts? It's, you know, you hear 26 million, 23 million, 42 million, well, I don't think you said that, but I just made that part up, but it seems like there's just boatloads of money. And then when we read stuff from MSBA, but you're going to pay for this, and you're going to pay for this, and you're going to pay for that. So, I mean, and not that we're not grateful for the money, and especially as Art and Tony both said, when we're trying to plan and we don't have a stair step to stand on, we're just standing in the boat wondering, well, rocking around, wondering how much money we even have. That is a great place now to stand, and you can stand on firm sand and plan, but if we could have some kind of a report of, or maybe it's a year from now, of what actually happened, where did that money fall out? Where did some of that, where did it go? What helped us? What did we spend money on that we didn't realize? Because like I said, if you read MSBA's memorandums, there's some things that we're going to end up paying for that maybe we are going to be surprised about. I think also to do a report, and maybe I'll ask the superintendent that, or I will, it's the superintendent, like around Christmas time, it would be nice to have a report about the READ Act, because those are a lot of things that we're doing already, and now we've got new laws from the state of how that's going to work, and I think that would be a great time to stop and take a moment to go, this was passed, and this is how we're working towards meeting that law, because that's really important, and there's a lot of interest in the district over our reading curriculum and how we do it and what we do, so, you know, that we can keep in the loop and keep everybody in the loop, because like I said, you know, it sounds like, you know, oh, we're going to get $23 million, well, what are you going to do with all that pile of money? And we're a big district.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that, and we will, I think, there probably will be actions that you will need to take as a board related to our implementation of certain things, so certainly we'll make the connection when we bring things like that.
Perfect.
The READ Act, I think you're definitely going to be hearing about, we'll be keeping you updated just separately from the legislative piece. I think you're going to see them in separate pieces more than you're going to see them combined, but we definitely will follow up.
And Violetta, I can't wait till you get your hands on that Grow Your Own Teacher Program, you should be having teachers all over the place, so congratulations, that's really exciting to get that grant.
Bianca?
So I would like to echo what Jackie said there. I think this was your third time applying for that money, so congratulations, thank you for not giving up your perseverance, and as somebody who watched an hour and a half-long video of these slides put out by MDE getting it to 20, like Sutchen said, thank you, so I appreciate all that. I do have a question about the student discipline. Do you know when some of these things will take place? Because I think later in our agenda, we're going to cover the student rights and responsibilities. Because I think later in our agenda, we're going to cover the student rights and responsibilities. When do these, when must they be implemented?
I don't know those dates. Our general counsel is here, I think.
Maybe she can cover that during that section if you want to wait. I'm fine. All right, thanks.
Okay.
And then, like personally, the, there were so many pieces that I really loved, from the universal meals to, you know, I'll be honest, the menstrual products in the bathrooms as remembering what that was like as a middle schooler. That is exciting to me to not have to worry about that. So, for kids, you know, to have access to, I think that's great. So, yeah, I appreciate all that you guys did when you advocated at the Capitol. And like you said, we don't get everything we always want, but sure seems like we got a whole lot more than we've had in the past.
And I was really, I'll just end with, just really encouraged with the conversation that we had with the legislators at our last meeting and very respectful of one another and kind of what this was about, but, you know, with caveats on things, and we have questions about those as well. So, but hopeful as we move forward.
Yeah, I think, I'll be honest, what the, that meeting that we had, the bipartisan group who came in, made it very clear, like, we can retool. If this isn't working, you know, we can go back and let us know. Let us know if it's not working, which I think is a good thing. Yeah.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to represent the district at the Capitol as our Legislative Advisory Council. We just have a fabulous group. So, if there's ever a time you want to stop in and be part of the group, let us know.
Any other questions or comments? Just real quick, in addition to all the echoing of not keeping us here till midnight with all the updates, much appreciated. But also, I wanted to say, I've been doing this whole session, been keeping a lot of updates. I want to think in addition to our LAC and other groups, just the public. Because one thing I did see is some legislation being introduced and changed based on our public testimony. I saw the photo of you testifying, Violetta. Many others were out testifying, speaking with legislators, talking with the need for funding, the different funding sources, how to increase that, and maybe some effects that some legislations might have that hadn't been considered. And I saw a lot of legislation get updated just because of that advocacy. So, it really does help when people stay in touch of what's happening and contact their legislators, because we saw a lot of changes happen too.
Great.
Thank you. All right. Next on reports, I would like to welcome Kaia Bruce to the podium to do our Community Education Summer Report.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the school board. Our community ed team, along with 247 instructors, teachers, coaches, and staff, have planned over 1,500 fun learning opportunities for all ages this summer, and I'm here this evening to share some of those activities with you. Tonight, I'm not only highlighting the abundance of summer activities, but also some of the team members who diligently strive to provide fun and inclusive community education programs that expand students and families' learning all year long. Youth Programs Coordinator, Marisa Schroht, and Assistant Amanda Kuhn are always excited for the summer season because they can, they get to be on the front lines more than they are able to during the school year. They get to hear and observe the enthusiasm and joy of summer fun and learning that is taking place inside and outside of our buildings. They have planned new dance classes, including hip hop and intro to kick, new cooking classes such as backyard bug snacks, festive fair foods and culinary school, and new outdoor activities like pickleball. Coordinator Matt McCabe continues to work with our high school sports coaches to offer 140 sections of sports camps. There are over 3,700 student athlete enrollments to date. The number of sports camps offered and the number of participants continues to increase every year. Aquatics Program Coordinator, Teja Moreau, and Assistant Andrew Latimore will be very busy this summer at our middle school pools, with over 1,600 students learning to swim, as well as revolution swimming for competitive swimmers, and training more lifeguards and swim instructors. We are planning for more than 350 adult students to learn English and earn high school credits or prepare for the GED exam. ABE Lead Teacher Chris Ria is looking forward to working with students like O.S., who came from El Salvador as a teenager and began attending Apple Valley High School. Later, her brother, younger brother, arrived from El Salvador. O.S. dropped out of school at 10th grade and entered the workforce to support herself and her brother. A few years later, her brother graduated from Apple Valley High School, and she knew it was her time to come back to school and finish what she started. O.S. has been attending ABE and looks forward to continuing her education this summer. She is committed in her quest for earning her high school diploma from Apple Valley High School through ABE. Besides high school sport camps, Adults Programs Coordinator Matt McCabe provides quality learning opportunities for community members ages 18 and over, including classes this summer for adults in tennis, golf, pickleball. Do you notice a theme with pickleball? And forest bathing, as well as an array of fitness classes. Project Explorer Coordinator Patty Vance enjoys creating and providing opportunities for adults with disabilities to connect, socialize, build friendships, and learn. She's incredibly excited to have many opportunities to get outdoors with a tour of CHS Field and attending Twins and St. Paul Saints baseball games, as well as Minnesota United Soccer Game. There are three mini golf nights, along with a tournament sponsored by the Lakeville Lions, as well as hikes and strolls, pickleball, and outdoor yoga. Our fundraiser dance on June 29th will have a live band, over 60 raffle baskets and approximately 350 participants. Kristi Hansen, Early Childhood Family Services Assistant Administrator, and the ECFS Summer Team are excited to offer early childhood family education classes and Connections preschool classes. Meeting new families in the summer and building relationships with our youngest learners is a highlight in our year-round programming. Connections Preschool has a free program this summer for children with limited or no preschool experience. Students will prepare for becoming part of a kindergarten community through fun and engaging activities. Breakfast, lunch, and transportation will be available. And Kristi Myers, Facility Use Coordinator, has already been enjoying outdoor programs on our fields and is looking forward to having our wonderful building supervisor staff monitor enrichment programs during the day and rentals during the evening. Our district facilities are often just as busy in the summer as they are during the school year. Our community education summer classes and activities began today and run through late August. The classes I just highlighted are a small taste of the multitude of opportunities offered to our community this summer. Some members of our community education management team are here this evening, and I'd like them to stand and be recognized so you can see the people behind the activities. They begin diligently working on summer programming in the fall to ensure a fun and memorable summer for people of all ages, along with all the programs and services they provide during the school year. I admit I'm biased, but this is the best community education team in the state. I'm going to get a little emotional. They are some of the most creative, intentional, and dedicated people I've had the opportunity to work with. Thank you. This year, we have been celebrating 50 years of community education in District 196. We are grateful for the community's trust in our work over all these years, and it is our absolute pleasure and privilege to continue to strive in offering quality learning opportunities for people of all ages in District 196. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kaia. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Sachin.
Thank you. Congratulations on 50 years. That's amazing. As a family who uses the service frequently, who now has recently accounted for two of the 6,096 hours of facility use, I must say you folks are on a five-star operation, and you're right, there is so much heart compassion that each of you bring in, and our community is so well-served because of each and every single person of you. So, I agree with you. This is the best team in the state, in the nation, ever, perhaps? Series of MVPs, and just thank you for the amazing work that each of you do.
Other questions or comments? Sakoudin?
I would like to second what Sachin just said. Myself, I'm a, you know, I received a lot of training, and my kids and all my family will like it, and I can attest that you guys are the best. As a user, I'm not talking as a school board. But the thing about it also is that how you meet the needs, different needs of members in our community, specifically how innovative and creative you guys are. In fact, I just saw a couple courses that my kid shared with me. You guys are adding, I'm not sure, again, coding classes for kids? I just wanted to say thank you for being creative and innovative at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments?
Give you a big round of applause. It's just amazing what you guys do. So, thank you.
I also am grateful for our incredible leadership team and their leader as well. I think we get that catalog in the mailbox, and it is full of opportunities that there's no parallel. So, I'm going to join that. You are phenomenal. Thank you so much, and we're grateful for everything all of you do. And thank you, Kaia.
Thank you.
Bianca?
So, I have a question, and I don't remember the answer, and I know it was brought up in the Community Ed Advisory Council meeting. How many kids are on the waiting list for preschool, pre-K?
Oh, gosh, I don't have that number off the top of my head right now.
No, that's all right.
But I'll get back to you.
It was like more than five, right?
Oh, yeah, it's more than five, yeah.
So, I think between that and then just how your classes fill up is a testament to the need and the desire and the quality of services provided. So, thank you. And you had a summer or an outdoor pre-K, like a nature preschool classes here? I really wanted to get, you know, we do the tours, and we just couldn't make it work. So, I'm hoping that that's back next year.
It will be back.
But how did that go?
Great. Yeah.
Thumbs up, thumbs up. Good, awesome.
Yeah, we had a, we had a really good response to that for our first season, so we're very proud.
Great. Maybe we can add that to the tour list next year. Thank you.
Just not in the winter, right?
Yeah. I'll go in the winter. I got, you know, I got a snowsuit. I mean, it's orange, I think, you know, right now.
I'll just end by saying briefly, I think a lot of us, including myself, share your bias. This is the best. So, and just presentations like this prove it, the actions of our community prove it. And yeah, one of my favorite things to get in the mail is that catalog. And I always just love seeing all the new things that come up that we can participate in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, next on the agenda, we are moving into old business. I would like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to discuss overview of student rights and responsibilities.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. On May 8th of this year, I was before you under New Business with my colleagues Violetta Hernandez Espinoza and Stephanie Ochaki to present the overview of student rights and responsibilities for the 2024 school year. Tonight, I'm here seeking your approval of the proposed changes. I won't go through the presentation and the PowerPoint again, but I would encourage the audience and those watching at home to go to the district's website or the district's YouTube channel to review the presentation. I also want to mention again, for the benefit of the public, that the overview of student rights and responsibilities is where the district summarizes many important notices and policies, including the student discipline policy. The overview is mailed home to families at the end of the summer, and it's changed every year to reflect revised laws from the previous year, in this case, 2022, and we'll come back to that in a little bit, but also to catch up with various regulations and policies that we revised during the course of the previous year, as well as to pull in the input of our community, our school communities and our families. This year, the proposed changes were also informed by the recommendations of a district-wide committee that began meeting in the fall of 2021 to examine the district's discipline policy, to review disciplinary data, and to obtain additional public input. Stephanie and Violetta are in the audience here tonight, and I want to publicly thank them for all of their work with this committee. It was a lot of hard work, many meetings, and I also want to thank the members of that committee. We had members from across the district, parents, staff, all sorts of representatives. So, again, want to publicly thank them for all of their work on that. There were a great many proposed revisions to the overview of student rights and responsibility from all of the sources that I mentioned. Many of those changes appeared in the discipline policy, but they also appeared in other sections of the overview, specifically under student nutrition, health and safety, digital tools, and much, much more. The changes are detailed in the agenda item that you have before you tonight, and they can also be found in that May 8th presentation. So, this is a good time to note that, as indicated in an earlier presentation tonight, that the 2023 Minnesota Legislature did make a number of changes to many of the laws that affect the content of the overview of student rights and responsibilities. You heard about many of those changes earlier tonight, and Board Member Vernig asked a good question, how does that potentially affect what we're hoping to approve tonight? So, here's what we're going to do. There are a variety of changes that were made that will affect the content of this. At one point, I thought about, do we try to unpack that quickly between New Business and Old Business and make those changes? There's just too much. And it's not just in discipline, it's also going to appear in our sections on human rights, data privacy, and other sections. We have to get it to the graphics department in order to get it published and sent home by the end of summer. So, what I propose we do, as we have in previous years, normally, we're not catching up with the legislative changes until the following year. But let's, in our cover letter that goes home with it, alert families that there were legislative changes and that we will be making changes to our underlying regulations and policies and advising all of our administrators on making sure that we get those implemented. And then, the next time this comes for the 2425 overview of student rights and responsibility, we'll again do catch-up with all of those regulations that we updated. So, that's my proposal in terms of how we go about accomplishing it. Only other solution is we push out the publication date, in which case, families wouldn't get this book until deeper into the school year, and we like them to have it before the first day of school, if that makes sense. So, with that, I do want to seek the school board's approval of the proposed revisions to the Overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook for the 2324 school year. Just remembered, I didn't fully answer Bianca's question. Most of those disciplinary laws are effective with the next school year. There are a small number of them that become effective later, but by and large, especially with respect to discipline, in contrast with curriculum, they are effective at the beginning of the school year. So, again, back to seeking approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and otherwise, the administration seeks your approval.
Thank you, Jill. This is an action item tonight. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Joel and a second by Sakoudin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions, comments from board members?
Yeah.
Bianca?
Sorry. So, I'm just trying to understand the timing. I like your, you know, we'll let families know that these changes. Will the district have formally adopted those changes by the start of the year? Is that what you're saying? And then, it would just show up in print in 2425?
Correct. So, everything that you see in the overview of student rights and responsibilities is backed up by an underlying regulation, or in some cases, a policy. We'll have time over the course of the summer to go ahead and look through those legislative changes, make changes to the underlying regulations. Those will be up on our website as well. It's just we won't be able to do that in time to get them into the overview. Does that make sense?
Yep. So, it's the print piece that, so would you then be coming back to us to propose the new changes before the start of the school year? Am I understanding that correctly?
To the overview or to the policies?
To the policies, I guess.
Okay. Okay. So, let me try to illustrate it with, see if I can pull this out. So, to the policies and regulations, we'll get those updated before the start of the school year. Regulations don't come to the Board, policies do. So, regulations is where really the details can be found and I think most of the changes that we're going to need to make will be made to regulation. And we can certainly communicate all of those regulations out to you so you see them as they unfold. There may be a small handful of policies that are affected as well and I think likely we can get those through the Board this summer as well. But as far as the document that gets published and sent home to families, that will get published without the benefit of those regulation changes. And then, it won't be until next spring when we bring it back to you for 24-25 that the regulation updates get incorporated into the book. Does that make sense?
Yeah, would those be updated online then? Like, you could find the most current online?
Probably not, because we like the Board to approve this. So, I'm thinking, no. Again, what would be there online would be that cover letter from, signed by the superintendent, making it clear that, hey, there are also some legislative changes that are not reflected in the book, but again, we follow those legislative changes. And I guess the other thing I would say is, this really isn't, although there's a great many more changes this year from the legislature, it's not that different than how this usually works. So, normally, we bring this book to you earlier in the process. We bring it to you in typically March and April. So, that's before the session ends. So, typically, we don't have the latest sessions input incorporated in this book before it's published, just because of the timing when we bring it to Board. We're a little later this year because we wanted to make sure that we got all of that committee work incorporated. So, that's the reason we're later.
Okay, great, thanks. Yep. And then, as far as that committee work goes, I believe MDE has a group that reviews and comments on this. Did you guys run this, these changes by them or seek input from them at all?
We did, yes. So, we had representatives of MDE gave some input on the changes that we were proposing. And so, yes, I don't know that they saw the final form of all of our changes, but along the way, in fact, I think it was even, you know, early in the spring, or maybe it was late winter, we obtained their input.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Sachin?
Thank you. Jill, are there any parts of what was proposed now by the legislator in what's in our document that are kind of in either conflict with each other? The reason I just asked this is, you know, in the instance when a school is applying things differently than what the document is, would we ever get into a situation where someone is saying, hey, this is whatever? You know, so are there any things to that magnitude or maybe not?
Not in a stark way. And I will say one thing where it's good for us is, a couple of years ago, we made the change where we don't do suspensions for grades three and below. So, that's a big chunk of it that we're ahead of the game on. One thing that is new with the legislation is there's a mandate now to try non-exclusionary disciplinary measures before you move to suspension in all but the more extreme cases. That doesn't necessarily fit well with our grid. So, we're going to need to figure out how we infuse that in to require our school administrators to try non-exclusionary practices before going to suspension, again, except in those real extreme health and safety types of situations. There's other ones where we need to stop and take a look at it. So, for example, recess is limited now, taking away recess as a disciplinary measure. I want to take a closer look about how we address that here to see if what we have currently is in conflict. I don't know that it necessarily is. It's more just getting back to our administrators, making it clear what those limitations are. So, again, not so much stark contrast, but it's more about the finessing of the language in certain places.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, you just mentioned the non-exclusionary discipline component for suspension. Would that address the issue that I had last time with the expulsion for chemical sales of chemicals and paraphernalia? Where we go, you know, first offense is expulsion. Does that apply to that piece or?
Yeah, I think we'll have to look at that, Bianca. It's not quite that simple. I think there is potentially a viewpoint that that is a health and safety sort of risk if somebody's dealing drugs to other students. So, we might want to first look at that, is that one of those categories of conduct that rises to the level of extreme enough that you could suspend at the first instance. The other thing that I'll point out about the new language is basically, it says you have to try non-exclusionary measures first, but not necessarily for every type of disciplinary infraction. So, let's say that somebody engaged in a disciplinary infraction in September and we tried those non-exclusionary practices. And then, come December, they do a new behavior, right? Let's say it's the drug sale. Well, we've already tried the non-exclusionary, so then we could go with our suspension as called for in our rights and responsibilities book. So, it's a little complicated. It's not as if you would apply that to each and every behavior that occurs. You look back to has non-exclusionary practices been tried with this child at some point earlier in the year?
Great, that's really helpful. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Joel?
Yeah, and just kind of to clarify too, a lot of this information, a lot of the stuff that was just passed by the legislature, we are still waiting for guidance from the Department of Ed before we can say, well, what does this really mean? Because we can't have 334 school districts all coming up with their own interpretation. So, we can't really, some of this stuff, we just have to wait for more guidance. And the other thing, just for clarification, is that, you know, we will follow the law, even if it's not exactly what's in the book. If things have changed, you know, the law will take precedence over what's in that book. And we would communicate that as to the best of our ability through our normal communication processes, through our buildings and principals and so forth. So, it's not like this is set in stone and if it falls out of compliance with the law, well, then we're in trouble. No, it's not the case. This is a living document even throughout the year.
You said that perfectly. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, there was a motion to approve by Joel and a second by Sackoudin. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
All right, next, I'd like to welcome Tom Peterstun to the podium to go over the 2024-25 school calendar.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'll refer into the 2024-25 proposed school calendar. The school calendar before you tonight was presented as New Business to you at the May 8th meeting. There have been no changes to the calendar that was presented on May 8th. Once again, we need to keep in mind that we may encounter educational needs or legislation may pass in the future that could cause us to modify this calendar. I recommend that you approve the 2024-25 school calendar summarized in the exhibit. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
This is an action item tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Jackie and a second by Sachin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments by board members? Excellent. Seems straightforward and I think we asked our questions during New Business at our last meeting. There was a motion to approve by Jackie and a second by Sachin. All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is New Business and I'd like to welcome Superintendent Krieger to the podium to go over our strategic roadmap for operational planning.
Thank you so much. I am excited to be here to share our district's strategic roadmap with you. We talked about this at a Board workshop recently, so you've seen this before, but based upon some feedback and input and discussion, we have made some changes that are in this final version that I want to share tonight and am asking for your approval this month of June. So, we'll start off with a little bit of a timeline, go back to 2020-2021, and that January, we had a committee that began to look at facilities' needs. In February, we had another committee that began the operational planning process. So, I think it's really interesting that you just look back over the last few years and here we are with two pretty major initiatives pretty much underway. So, in March, the pandemic began and the work on both of those things came to a quick halt and our focus shifted to looking at how do we respond to COVID-19? And our focus became that safety, equity, and achievement. C-change was our focus for that school year as we were dealing with a lot of changes coming our way in rapid order. So, then, we move forward to 21-22 school year in June. That work on the facilities review and operational planning, both of those teams resumed their work. In October, with the operational planning team, we worked with a large number of people from our community to do this Storywall event that documented the District 196 history and culture over time. November, we had an environmental scan that identified key trends and influences. And obviously, a lot of that had to do with the response to the pandemic. And in December, we began that survey and focus group process to ask our students, families, and staff, what were their desired daily experiences in District 196? Moving forward, 22-23 school year, November, the facilities committee came with a recommendation to the Board. In January, the Board called for the referendum to address those needs in our buildings. And during this past spring, we continued our work on operational planning alongside the work on the bond. And those are the components of the operational planning process that have been worked on and evolved over time. And today, we're bringing you the last one, the strategic roadmap, asking for your approval. In May and June, as we know, the voters approved the bond questions. And so, now, full circle, we're coming back to that strategic roadmap as well. And this is an overview of the process. We were facilitated by Teamworks International. And if you look at the center of this process, it's the classroom-to-boardroom strategic planning. So, looking at the center, that desired daily experiences, what is best for our students, our families, and our staff. And the blue circle talks about consultation, how are we getting input? How are we making sure that people are aware of the thoughts going into this plan? On the gold circle, that's governance, the work of the Board. And a big component of that is that strategic roadmap and so, that's what we're sharing tonight. And then, on the top is management. That's the work of the administration. How do we take our strategic roadmap and turn that into implementation so that we're providing the optimal school educational experience for every single one of our students? So, with that, I'm going to review those components of this roadmap. Our mission is our core purpose with distinction, our core values. They're the drivers of our words and actions. Our vision is what we intend to create. And our strategic priorities focus on continuous improvement. So, with our mission, our core purpose with distinction, for years, we have had a mission that has served us well and it was educating our students to reach their full potential. We are coming to you proposing a change to that mission to read educating, developing, and inspiring our students for lifelong success. And part of this does come from that journey over the last few years of understanding how comprehensive public education is and how important it is that we're looking at our whole child and bringing that whole child forward to consider social, emotional needs, to consider what are those other things besides just straight-up education that are so important to ensuring that lifelong success that we want for our students? And with that, we suggest our tagline is still pertinent for our district, "One District, Infinite Possibilities." And I think even just looking at the Board reports tonight, when we think about the work of our Community Ed Department and the infinite possibilities, given the leadership and the creativity that they present to our families, for myself and our team, we really felt this continues to resonate. So, the proposal for mission is to tweak it, to change it a bit, but to keep the tagline the same. So, moving forward, we look at what are our core values, drivers of our words and our actions. What can we go back to as we are making decisions? And as you can imagine, this had a lot of input, a lot of thought and consideration. And we're much revision. I think that where we landed is in a good place. So, student-centered, all decisions are centered on what is best for students. Empathy, seeking awareness and understanding of the perspectives and experiences of others. Wellness, support the emotional, social, and physical well-being of the whole person. Integrity, act with respect, honesty, and responsibility. Achievement, providing learning with high expectations, rigor, and resiliency for all. Collaboration, learn and engage together for a shared purpose. Community, foster an environment of inclusivity, engagement, and belonging. And lifelong learning, inspire a love of learning for all ages. And so, that brings us to our vision. What is it we intend to create? District 196 provides the experiences that our students, families, and employees desire by developing the whole child and honoring diverse student needs and cultures, engaging students with opportunities in academics, arts, and athletics, and living our mission and core values to prepare students, families, and employees for lifelong success. So, in order to do that, we're looking at our strategic priorities. What is our focus on continuous improvement? And we narrowed those down to four main overarching areas. The first being increasing capacity, skills, structures, and experiences in social, emotional well-being. The second, strengthening and aligning curriculum and instructional practices across all classrooms to improve student outcomes and staff efficacy. The third, supporting equity is a core competency through practices, structures, beliefs, resources, and staffing. And the fourth, provide staffing, facilities, technology, and equipment needed to support a safe and dynamic learning environment for all students. And if approved by the Board, those would be the four overarching priorities that would help to direct our work into the future. So, this is what we're asking you to approve on the right-hand side, those four components. And on the left, you can see from that Storywall, one of the more creative depictions from a team that night of the years 2017 to 2021. So, next steps would be the Board reviews and then, next meeting would act upon the strategic roadmap as I've laid it out tonight. In September, we begin implementation of the operational plan. And then, in January, we review those vision cards. That's how we're measuring what our progress is on our operational plan. We report progress out to the Board. And then, in July, we again report progress and make updates. And one of the things that we really feel compelled about this particular operational planning process is that it continues to evolve and it continues to be responsive to the needs and the progress that are in front of us. But the most important thing is, it's about our kids. And our kids are what drive us, our kids are what deserve our attention and our focus and our shared values and the components of this plan so that we're serving them to the way that they need and that they deserve into the future. Any questions?
Thank you, Superintendent Krieger. This is New Business tonight, so it will come to the Board for action at our June 26 regular School Board meeting. But at this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Art?
I just wanted to say, you know, I really like the way that we approached. In the past, we've had equity as a pillar of our strategic plan. It's just been this plank, you know, and we've acted on it. But as you look through the entire roadmap here, you see that equity and cultural competency and those sorts of things are woven throughout. And I really like how we've kind of brought that into, you know, just about every part of the conversation, because I think it's so important going forward that we think about, you know, the diversity of this community and the growing diversity of this community and how we're including everyone and making sure that we're meeting the needs of all students and all families in this district. And so, I was really happy to see it just not, I don't want to say just be a plank in the platform. I'm, you know, I'm glad that it has been. But I see now that it's much deeper, we've really embedded it and so, I like that part of it. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Joel?
I just want to say that I always approach strategic planning very skeptically after going through many, many of these in corporate, in the corporate world. And so many times, it's just kind of presented from the top and everybody says, okay. And then, that's pretty much the end of it. It really doesn't go into effect in the lives of the employees in that case. But here, I just, I love the process that we've been through. that we've been through and how we've involved everybody. We've involved the community. We've involved students, parents, staff, administration. The school board's been involved in a lot of this. And that every piece of this has just a whole deep well of information behind it and support for our staff to be able to go out and say, okay, what does this mean? How can I use it in my classroom? Or how can I use it to help our students? And so every one of these points in the roadmap is backed up with a lot of work and a lot of support. And so it's not something that's just going to go sit on a shelf, hopefully, that our staff can actually go in and dig into, what does this mean? How can I implement it in the classroom? And how can it help our students be better? And, you know, accomplish our new mission of lifelong success for everybody? So I'm very optimistic. I'm not so skeptical though. And I appreciate the work that's gone into this and the support that is behind it that we're not seeing here today, but I know exists out there.
You know, this process was very interesting, very eye-opening. And one of the things I remember at the very beginning, when Teamworks was there, they went through this, those three pie chart things. And it was so great of an orientation, I think, to start because as a school board, our job is to not govern, but is to ensure proper governance. And I think oftentimes you hear about the narrative around, well, if I get elected, I'm going to change this about the curriculum or I'm going to change this about how it's taught. And it's important to acknowledge that the professionals who are in place to ensure the management remain different from many of us who aren't licensed in this profession that we are. So it's a great way to reframe how we approach strategic planning and not get into the elements of directing where the plan goes. So I think that was really good for many of us. And I'll just speak for myself here. I also just am so grateful to see, as much as we talked about the sea change at the peak of the pandemic, it almost seemed like we were trying to stabilize things. And this is the path forward to how Joel was talking about into getting back to our core mission. And it's great to see that we're taking that next turn right now as well. One thing that I, you know, I'm just going to say this in a clunky way, so forgive me for saying it. But I know that this has come across to me oftentimes in speaking to our students that being stewards of our environment is a big part of how they see value in what we're doing within our schools and everything. And I know that's not our core mission is to do everything that you just mentioned. But how we do our core mission, anything we can do to address things that are important to them, you know? We have a half a billion-dollar budget. And all of that, much of that is spent in the classroom. But some of that is also spent in cafeterias and buildings and energy, blah, 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 blah. And so anything we can do to acknowledge the things that are valuable to our key stakeholders, I don't know how we do it. But if we can just acknowledge our ability to be able to do it in a way that ensures stewardship of the planet that we're in, it's just something that I will just put forth. I don't have an answer. It's just a sentiment I wanted to convey. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, and if there's other questions or comments, I'll go back to. But there were a couple, well, obviously, I can't not talk about strategy. I just love it. I think it's super exciting. But a couple of things that you said that I really liked. You said that the strategic plan continues to evolve. And I think that what I see a lot of times is people say have a strategic plan and they write it and they frame it on the wall and they never touch it again. They never look at it, right? And just sticks there. And 10 years later, they're like, maybe we should get around to updating that thing, right? But I like how you're talking about that it's going, we're looking at it and we're going to keep evolving to meet the needs of our community, of our district, of our students, right? I think that's really important and that you recognize that. On kind of, I love how you were talking about, like stewards of the environment, Sachin too. In fact, we came from a meeting, a special board meeting, where we talked a lot about that and what we're going to do. And as I was thinking about it, you know, a couple of things caught my attention as you were presenting the strategic priorities. One was the last of strategic priorities where you talked around focus, right? And I love how we have the strategic priorities out there. But one thought was, I wonder if there's an opportunity to narrow that down? And you can correct me because maybe that's going to be in the district vision card where it's the metrics. I think we talked about that at our workshop a little bit too. I'm still understanding this framework myself. But I could definitely, kind of to your point, the emphasis on the environment. We applied for electric bus grants. We're talking about it in the new buildings we're building from the bond. I feel like the last three speakers from the community, well, most of them, have come to talk about environmental impacts and the solars that we're adding. Maybe that's a portion where we can add some sustainability initiatives in that plan. Just a suggestion, again, I don't have the answer, but just going off what you said too, maybe that's an opportunity there. Bianca?
Have questions and feedback? So one of the things that, and sorry, I should have mentioned it in the last meeting that we had about it. But you say developing the whole child and honoring diverse student needs and cultures. And the word child can be a bit polarizing for some of our students. And I'm just wondering if there was any thought of maybe just rewording that sentence since we do have now students that are to the age of 22 or as we've seen in our adult basic ed, they're adults, not children. So I think that could be a turnoff for some people right out of the gate. And then, and I know I brought it up before and it still kind of bugs me about the whole thing is the desired daily experience. Because I don't know that when you filled out that questionnaire in the pandemic, when people still had kind of that at the forefront of their minds, that those answers would have been used to guide the mission and the vision and the core values of the district going forward for the next, say, what, three, five, seven years? So I find that a little challenging. And then the desired daily experiences, you know, you guys had the slides up and it was like, these are what stood out to us. And I'm wondering, did those mirror with what the answers of the families were? Or how did we go about soliciting feedback on the desired daily experience for families that the oral language is more common than filling out a survey? So I, like Joel, you said you're skeptical. I maybe take that skeptical piece to the next level and go, is this, the information, all of this that we used really representative of our whole student body? And is it still relevant now, given that we're in a bit of a different place than we were a few years ago? But you did say that we are open to, like it's a fluid document. So I would hope that we wouldn't maybe wait five or seven years to update that, but that we would continually update it? And one thing that I, and I don't know, like Cory and Sachin, you both brought up stewardship, right? Of whether it's sustainability. But where's Mark? We have like won how many years for fiscal responsibility? And it's not represented in here as a core value or anything like that, which I think is fine. I don't know how you do that, but how you represent that. But being good stewards, whether it's of the environment or taxpayer dollars or our students, seems like maybe a missed win. I don't know. But we have all sorts of accolades for our finances. So it seems to be something that the district holds valuable. So those are my comments.
So I want to make sure I heard a lot of feedback. But I also heard you ask a question probably posed about, was there an opportunity to collect feedback from communities that maybe don't use surveys? Is that what your question? Is that something we can respond to?
Well, I would like to respond, just to be clear. You've had this document for a number of months now. So is there something in the desired daily experiences that you don't feel is reflective of the community that you're opposed to? Or is it the process? So is it the product or the process that you're questioning?
I think stewardship is a piece that seems to be missing. At least I heard from a couple of colleagues here. I don't, I don't know. It's, we didn't, we didn't, I think we just had our meeting a few weeks ago, so or last month. So it's been a challenge to kind of digest it. And then I feel like sometimes we're given, this is what it is, this is what we found. But I don't necessarily know that that's always true.
What's not true? I guess maybe I need to respond to that.
Is this really?
Tell something that's not true.
Yeah, yeah. Is this really representative of our, our community?
But what do you find that isn't representative of your community?
Well, I mean, the first thing we could talk about is sustainability. So, I mean, we've heard that from so many people who are coming forward. But also, and Art, you brought it up where you said equity, we've built it into all of these pieces. And I know that can be a charged word, a charged word or a charged concept. Will our communities see that? Will they see themselves represented? Will they see that component in here? And I guess I just don't know that answer. Did we, did we do a temperature?
It's in one of the strategic priorities.
Yeah, but in the core values, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And did we, did we like, and I don't, I don't remember if we covered this in the special board meeting. Did we bring this to families or to?
Yes.
People to say, okay? And everybody was cool with it? I guess I don't remember.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that about bringing this to families.
It's been a two-year process. That's what I was trying to explain, where we had opportunities for input, opportunities for discussion. We definitely can bring it back to the board. And I've asked some of you, gave us some feedback, which we then incorporated before we sent it out again in the newsletter. So we administratively, we're feeling a sense of urgency because we think it's important. If everything's important, nothing rises to be a focus, to get done. But if the board does not share that sense of urgency, we can go back to the process.
I think the board shares the sense of urgency, right? And getting this approved, definitely. I feel, what I've been hearing is just some, and tell me if I'm wrong, please speak up, some opportunities just to focus and strengthen a little of the wording, right?
And that's why it's been coming to the board, I think probably for the last four to six weeks, just to be clear. Because we're not trying to do something without the board being aware.
No. And I think the purpose why this is on new business is just to give the board more time to reflect. But I totally understand, things can pop up later. You had a comment, Sachin?
What I just suggested earlier is I've been a part of this process from the first meeting we had with Teamworks. So I am, I personally am very proud of the work that has gone in. And I'm very proud of how we have now taken that next step away from the sea change into this as well. I'll just speak to my comments. My comments were a consideration or fine tuning of, you know, that isn't, sustainability isn't our core mission. We're not here to do that. It is one way to demonstrate value, you know? It's kind of how we do the work. So I just wanted to say, you know, in the spirit of, it's an evolving document. Strategy is always reflective of the ecosystem in which we live in. So I just want to kind of acknowledge the good work that has gone in already, yeah.
And we'll continue. I mean, it's, we're not waiting. We're continuing to work on these things regardless. And so if the board wants to take it back to the beginning and get input in different ways, we could certainly look at doing that because our work is here. We've got 30,000 kids. And sometimes, like to your point, which I totally understand because I feel like every time we get data and we're reviewing it and trying to encapsulate it into words, that's never going to be perfect. And if you have a perfect mission, values, core beliefs, I would like to see it. Because in this process, we have pulled from other districts and we felt that this reflected the data that we collected in our district. But certainly, that's why this comes to the board. It's up to you to decide if that is correct or if that is not.
Oh, I think, sorry, I just want to jump in. I don't think we need to retool and start all over. I mean, please, I hope my comments weren't taken that way. It's just like Sachin suggested, some fine tuning or tweaking. I think you guys have done an immense amount of work to get to this point. So, you know, take my comments for what they are. I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that we retool or start from the beginning at all.
And I just want to say, I mean, strategic planning, this, it's easy to look at one page that you had on the one slide and be like, oh, that's easy. But anyone that's gone through it knows it's not easy. And there's a lot of work that goes into that. And I think you recognize that, especially, I think we all have been involved in this from the beginning or just about, pretty close to the beginning. But I think the comments were just meant, and I don't want to speak out of turn, just to provide like those opportunities to maybe focus a bit, tweak a little bit. But I don't think anyone was talking about starting over because this is a, I'm really proud of the work that's gone into it, absolutely.
And that's why a few people have given us some feedback and we did make those changes. So thank you.
Did you have a comment, Jackie? Go ahead.
A little different direction. I like the plan. We've been working on this for 2020. And it's gone through a lot of people. A lot of people have looked at it. A lot of people have given input everywhere from our parents to our community members. The one, and I think you used the word Cory, that it was very unique, the way we, the way we walked through this and built this plan. My favorite part was the story wall when we sat with everybody in there, how long have you been in the district? And did colored pages, here's what we did in, when I, when somebody first started in the 80s. And here's the seven, or here's the, in 1990s. And here's the 2000s. And what, what did you bring? What was the, what was the theater of the world at that time? And how did that impact education? What did that bring? You know, here's, here's iPads. Here's, or here's a computer. So I think that was, that was one of my favorite pieces. I like the desired daily experience. I think that's clear. I think people understand that. I understand that if my daughter I understand that if my daughter or if my granddaughter is in first grade, what is her desired daily experience? What do I expect or what would I expect if I was her mom that she's going to get in first grade? What is her desired daily experience? And I think we've got input from that. I don't think it matters if we were in the pandemic or we're not in the pandemic, that everybody has an idea of what they expect for their child or their grandchild as they go into school. And this is not only for students, this is for staff. Staff has a desired daily experience to be feel safe to all the other things that they do and for our families and our community. What is our hope and our, our dreams for our kids? That's a desired daily experience. So I can't say as, well, as a teacher, I taught them, but they didn't learn. That wasn't the parent's desired daily experience. That shouldn't have been the kid's desired daily experience and what were you doing? So to me, this targets right at the things that we should be getting at. This is also just a few pieces, the high, the high road of what this was about because all of these little, um, strategic roadmaps have other kinds of things. Here are our core values, how do we meet them? And then when you look at those strategic roadmaps, um, we talked, I asked about the Read Act. Reading is going to be in one of those. It might delegate how we're going to do reading. Um, we're doing, you know, science is going to be one of them as we, as we go through and input the new science standards. That's probably where some of our, our other kinds of things would be. So this isn't a standalone, these 10 slides aren't just by any means a standalone of what we've done with this strategic planning. So I think you've done a really good job. I, I wish I would have a little bit more understanding of what board members don't like about this because I'm not sure that I, I quite get it, except that you want more environmental stuff. That's all I've heard really.
Well, I can answer that.
Yeah, please.
I mean, you know, I'll respectfully disagree with you on that, Jackie. As a parent who actually filled out the desired daily experience and their child filled it out as well, and somebody who's spoken to a lot of people where I have asked about this survey and said, you know, how did you feel, or people who brought, brought it up at the time going, what is this? I don't understand these questions. The fact that that seems to be the core, and maybe it's not the core, maybe that's just an impression that I've gotten as we've discussed this, how we've shaped our core values and our vision and our mission. They would, the, many people that I have spoken to have said, what I said then and what I would say today are very different. So when we talk about like achievement, right? And provide learning with high expectations, rigor and resiliency for all, man, I really hope we believe that because, you know, when we look at our world's best workforce data, it isn't, isn't quite aligned with that or the fact that, yes, we needed the Read Act to push us in some of our literacy work. So that's maybe where that, and maybe it's just the term desired daily experience rubs me wrong. It, it, it leaves a bad taste because of when we filled that out and what people say. So are we already setting ourselves up for maybe less buy-in by using that, knowing that it doesn't really resonate with folks? I, I don't know.
I know.
Comments? Sakaouin?
Yeah, I would like to quickly add a comment. Just wanted to thank you, Mary, for the presentation that you took us back. And it's been a long process from what I remember. It took us a lot of time during COVID and everything. And I remember standing through every word that is that one pager that's going to come. So just wanted to say thank you for taking us back. And, uh, I mean, it's been a long process and I like it to where we landed. I mean, that's exactly what it, the explanation at the end of the day will be that, that I also wanted to share the importance. I mean, this is strategic plans, roadmap, they're really important because they set up new priorities and those priorities are basically high level from what I see it. They will be guided all our process in the coming years, even the budget that will be developed will all be based on that. And, you know, wanted to say that this is what we're going to be measured at the end of the day. It is a living document that you said it. And the only thing that I also can add it and, you know, basically say with the DDA is that I think it's been taken out already from the one pager. And also we said it, it was a survey that was sent out, everybody kind of, uh, you know, put their input and we're now having it, all of it will be a learning. So this will be going to the websites and a district website. And that will be place where we could use it as a, a learning moment for the district for those that are not familiar with the DDA really is. So that will explain it. So we have talked about that. My question now is basically, is this already online or will it be online in a district website at some point? Or does that have to wait until September or we can post them now after this discussion?
I think after, if the board were to approve it, I think at that point we would put it online. So this summer.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we will see you back at June 26th to vote on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Next, I would like to welcome Christopher Anyango Robsha to talk about the 2023-24 preliminary budget.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Kruger, members of the board and our public stakeholders. Thanks for having me here. Anyango Robsha, coordinator of finance for ISD 196. I kept thinking since sometime in November, when a new word entered the lexicon of my household, I used to watch horse racing, but it was usually just because I was placing the bet on the horse that was going to win. And then at some point I was, I was introduced to place and show. And then at some point trifecta showed up and I realized quickly that I should not be doing trifecta money with, you know, if you're gambling, you shouldn't use real money when the trifecta shows up. So it's always play money. So monopoly money came out when we were doing the trifecta. Other than that, it was all fun. And then November happens and we got introduced to a different trifecta, uh, that on the heels of our own at ISD 196, our own trifecta, athletics, academics and arts. Uh, I think ours is more fun because the trifecta that showed up at the legislature, well, they did a lot of work and Director Tashina, um, and Violetta did a fine job trying to walk some of us through a lot of stuff. They were busy, they started in March, they provided free meals, which is a boon for our students, so we care about that. And then they went to work and did other things. The budget I'm presenting today, and I'll kind of touch on some of those things, there's a little bit of what the legislature did, which is included in here. And then there's a lot that we, as was alluded to earlier, we're still unpacking. It's almost the same as, you know, honey got thrown out and it's nice and sweet and we like it, but we also know that it's sticky and the bees like it too. And so then there may be some stings coming. Until that happens, we'll just try to work through what we know and, and process those things that we still do not, do not understand. So to get into our budget cycle, looking at 2324, as I alluded to, December 2022 is when this board started this process. So for us, it was a levy certification process and that set the revenue piece for our taxes. Uh, the preliminary budget that's included in here has state, we use estimated state funds on, on the budget. We are using projected enrollment from fall of 2022 that we, that committee and was presented to the board in the fall of 2022. Uh, we're using estimates for FTE and categorical allocations to the buildings. Now in state funding, there are three main pieces that have received a lot of chatter, talk, um, funding in the formula. So 4% is what was adopted between the state legislature, the governor, that's what they agreed to. We included that. So at the beginning of our budget process in February, we anticipated because everybody was saying we're getting a lot of money, where we aimed for the sky and we didn't go to 5%, we did 4%. Uh, that's what is included in here. There is state funding for specialized cross subsidy. We had a lot of noise about that. We did not include that in this budget. There was a lot of conversations about EL and EL cross subsidy, which to Christopher is still a misnomer, but we did not include any of the new money that was provided for EL, um, in, in, in the budget. So only state aid funding formula is what's included. What we will do when we come back to look at the final budget is we will use actual enrollment from October 1. We will be using, incorporating a lot more of what we know from the state funding into it. I'll have a caveat here for special ed. So the cross subsidy, the way that funding works is it's based on actual aids. The cross subsidy is a difference between aid and actual expenditures. When we meet in October and we start working through our final budget process, we will not know what our actual expenditures for special education are going to be. So we will have an estimate for what the cross subsidy may be for ISD 196, but we will not know what this legislative session actually provides. So we will try to, to limit, you know, close that gap, but just a heads up that we will not know until the end of the fiscal year 2324 to know how much that cross subsidy actually, how, how it impacts us. Uh, then the final thing we will incorporate in the final budget is contract approvals and then actual staff placements. Should there be any adjustments? There's a lot of grants. We just had about that one this morning. There's a lot of grants that are out there. Uh, we will bring those at the spring budget adjustment and we anticipate that this whole budget process of cycle for FY 2324 will conclude with the annual audit next summer. Athletics, ads, academics, it's all reflected in the number of students and how it is that we plan to, to meet those needs. So we're anticipating 29,000 students and between K-12 and then adult, um, learning, which is not included on this graph. We have stuff that are available to help, uh, meet that divide between what's happening in the classroom and then enrichment activities and athletics. And they vary. So we have instructional stuff and also we have our bus drivers, our custodians who help do the support piece and then also our, um, child nutrition stuff. The makeup of our student population is presented in the graph at the bottom left of this chart. And overall, all we're trying to do again here is meet the needs of our students. So Superintendent Kruger talked about our desired daily experiences. For me, that means when a student walks into Rosemont Elementary, well, they expect a teacher in the classroom, they expect a parent, they need specialized services. If they go to Northview, I would expect the same, a different student to expect the teacher, the aide, the principal. All these are things that we're expecting that there is, um, across the district, regardless of which building a parent walks into. If I live in Eagan, my student walking into Dakora Hills Middle School will not have too much of a different experience as the student who lives in and goes to Valley Middle Looking at our revenue news, um, 861 million is what's anticipated across all funds. Um, on this slide, I'll point out two items. So our general fund typically, when we look at this, has the lion's share of what's, of what we are proposing in terms of receipts. Uh, it is having just slightly more than 50% at 54% 469 million. Uh, you will notice, and this is much appreciation to the voting public who are on September, no, sorry, that was, the board started the process last September, the public took action uh, on the ninth of May. And what's being presented here is the fast slate of bond proceeds that we're anticipating uh, to help meet the building related needs of a school district. So those are the two items, the two major items. Uh, we do have other funds, special revenue, including community education and food service, uh, debt service, internal service funds, and then fiduciary. They are slightly less represented on, on this chart. On the expenditure side, you see the picture that we typically, we would have, again, the general fund having the, uh, the lion's share of this. We have anticipated spending 36 million in the initial bond construction work after the proceeds are received. Now, again, the budget process started prior to the vote taking place. So we anticipate, we were not anticipating the full plethora of funds or the full gamut of, of projects. So as the, as the projects get broken out, as the budget and, um, scheduling happens through, you will see the, the building construction fund, we're going to tweak that. But for now, what we are anticipating is this is what we will actually expand between September and, and June, based on the pay applications that come through. 630, $30 million is what's anticipated for our expenditure budget. A quick review on our state sources. Again, we are grateful that the legislature came through with funding. Uh, it is historic, but has, has been mentioned in the past. It is still short of where we could have been had they been doing this, um, kind of funding i- in the past. But we are grateful, 70% of the aid that we receive comes from the state. Uh, 24% is through property taxes. Uh, the federal government is kicking in 4% and then other local sources. This is our registration, our anticipated interest payments at 2%. So 469 million in anticipated revenue for the general fund. We have two views on the expenditure and again, looking at, we, we keep hearing students. So 69% of what we are spending is going directly into the classroom or directly meeting student needs. Again, meeting the arts, athletics and acad- and academic needs of our students. Our student support services that are included here at 15%. This is our transportation. This is our counseling guidance, providing those behavioral support that students need to make sure that the learning process is taking place. Site buildings, making sure that our buildings are taken care of so that the learning environment is safe for our students. Again, going back to when they walk in, they need to feel comfortable, they need to feel at home, they need to feel at ease, uh, so that we can then instruct them. Uh, 10% is being anticipated for, for building. And then administrative and district support at 3% and 4% respectively. We keep saying we are people sensitive, people heavy district, 84% of the budget that is being presented is directly related to the touch points, uh, that we have in, in meeting the needs of our students. Purchase services at 6%. That includes our utility payments and, um, minor consulting fees, uh, our supplies, equipment, those are the curriculum materials that are being presented and utilized in the learning process. Other expenditures, it shows up at 0%. It's about $100,000, so it's 0.0%. But that did not show up on this. 480 million is what we're anticipating in the general fund expenditures for the coming fiscal year. A quick overview of our operating funds. So general fund, we've done the detail. Uh, all I'll highlight here is we're anticipating, yes, we're dipping into our fund balance uh, in this budget picture. 63 million is what's anticipated fund balance, 13.1% reserve. Uh, the board minimum is at five, is at 5%. Our food service, um, getting healthy. Again, we are grateful that the legislature thinks and we agree that when students come to land, we need to remove barriers. So providing meals for all students is a path to ensuring that there's equitable, um, access and no distractions in the classroom. So they have provided, the legislature and the government now signed into law, uh, that all meals, the meals are this, our students are not à la carte. So the, the formula meals will be paid for between what the federal government provides as far as what's free and reduced. And then for all other students who do not qualify for free and reduced, the state will, uh, will cover the cost for that. So we're anticipating 19 million in revenue. Uh, with this, we anticipate there'll be an additional expense in terms of providing those services. There's more students needing to be fed, therefore we need more staff, we do need more food, um, to actually do the feeding. Uh, 16 million is what, uh, is budgeted in terms of expenditures. A fund balance of 8 million, 52%. Uh, Spencer has some work to do to bring that down, but for now, we are happy that he is meeting, uh, the minimums of, uh, making sure that there is, there's ample supply to, to provide for our students. Community ed, I was going to sing some praises, but they already left. Uh, as Kaya mentioned earlier, we have a, a top-notch group of individuals who are providing various services across the district. So before the students show up in our K, in, in the K-12 system, early childhood, childhood screening, we're making sure we are meeting those needs. And then after they graduate, we're coming back and we're doing yoga in the park or pickleball, uh, whichever one you fancy. So community ed is meeting those needs at 24%. We anticipate that their fund balance, uh, again, these are restricted for community ed, uh, services that they, they will be able to meet, uh, the needs of the community that we are serving. Just a sidebar on community ed. Throughout all our planning, we, we do not, we've not seen any funding changes as far as revenue that go into community ed. So it was a big and a welcome surprise that the legislature added, uh, to aid so that to make sure the programs that we're offering, when, you know, the lights on bill came out at the buildings, that there is additional funding that's being provided. So we are again grateful and Kaya would, would attest to that as well. Other funds, building constructions, we talked about this, 275 million in bond proceeds, anticipated first year expenditures of 36 million. Again, I'm putting an asterisk on that as the full schedule comes out, we probably will see that expenditure inch up. Uh, 239 million is what's anticipated in, in fund balance, uh, for the building construction fund at the end of FY 24. Our debt service, 17 million in revenues against expenditures of 16 million. Again, these are tax payments, receipts that we, that we would then use to pay our debt obligations. Internal service fund, 67 million revenue against 66 million expenditures. Uh, the three main areas, they are dental, medical and severance. The biggest chunk in this fund would be the medical and we're anticipating that, uh, just the medical portion of this to be at $62 million in, in revenues and expenditures. We are trying, as a self-funded plan, we need to make sure that there is ample reserves so that when the claims, um, hit or we, with the district needs to pay for those claims, that there is enough money, uh, in the pool to, uh, to meet those, those obligations. Uh, fiduciary funds, uh, for other post-employment benefits. Uh, we are being a bit conservative in the revenue projections here. Again, the market has been, um, fluctuating and last year we reduced our estimates. So this is a very conservative, uh, growth rate of 1.6 million. Uh, we have been spending between three and three and a half million dollars in other post-employment benefits. And so, uh, this is more the ceiling over the last three years in terms of what we anticipate spending. Uh, 51 million is what we anticipate as a fund balance, uh, based on our last actuarial study, which was just concluded, uh, in March. It is ample to. It is ample to meet the needs of what we anticipate coming out. So in aggregate, our budget summary, 861 million dollars in revenues against expenditures of 630 million, 389 million anticipated fund balance. Again, I have an asterisk on that. Just note that 239 million of that is specific for building and construction funds. So not available for class size reduction or any other things that we would like to do, but unable to do because of the bond funds and restricted to building construction. Our recommendation this evening, and I'll take a pause and address any concerns or other items that may pop. This is a fast reading of the budget. We will be bringing this back on June, at the next board meeting on June 26, at which point I would anticipate that we, the board will take favorable action. We have included a draft of our budget book. It's clocked in at 200, no, 169 pages, slightly smaller than our audit book. Again, it has everything anyone would like to know, from an executive summary on how it is that we develop the budget, the district mission goal. And then you can also see when you get to the second part of the financial, what each building is, how each building is getting allocated, and how much, how many students, and how they anticipate to expand those funds. I will pause and see if there's anything I can provide clarification on.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Taurine?
I just have a quote comment and a question. Please do not feel to compel to give me an answer. Now I know it is first reading. I should have read it, and which I've read it, too. But then it's just that I did not get, the question is that I just got it. Just wanted to, first, the question is that, you mean, this is very good presentation. You had the budget book, the way it is presented, and the preliminary, everything. I literally like it. I just wanted to thank you and acknowledge the hard work that went with all financial team and everyone within the district. That the MBA, did I read it somewhere, that you had it six years, that word? I mean, you had it six years, consecutive years, or what?
So our budget, the award?
Yeah.
So this is year eight.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So year eight on the award. So the budget book that's presented, there's an association of school business officials international, and they give us a guidance on what is needed. Again, they're looking at what information do we have as a district? What information does the public need? And then we have, as we either go for bonds or referendums, there is information that banks and other financial institutions need. And is there a way for us to present this data so that regardless of who's looking at it, it is accessible and detailed enough? So that's how, that's why we put together that budget book.
Well, thank you. Then the other one is just that I know each one of these numbers will tell a story. And again, it is just the projections, you know, but the revenue, whenever there is a revenue, there's some sort of decline somewhere. So there is, the preliminary budget on page 22, has it like a 20, 23, 24, is 469 is what is projected? Then 24, 25, it dips? Think it's get expensive, I know. But why is that dip? What story? And then it goes up on the projections of the following two years? I mean, I know the story behind it, something that we should be cautioned or worry about? I mean, it is projection.
Yeah.
Think this could change?
Yeah.
But I know what story this is gonna tell.
So when we develop the budget, so that the number of items that we put in, so as I said earlier, we had 4% is what we anticipated. And then there are future items that we think will happen. This year, so FY 2223, we had our compensatory aid went from 6 million to 12 million. We do have, within the, at the time we were developing this, there was no, nothing written in statute saying the compensatory aid would be ongoing. So we had that drop off coming in for compensatory. In the previous years, we also had revenue from the Fed. So the ESA money that was coming in, we had several years to spend that. We were anticipating that money going away. So then for next fiscal year, you have the compensatory funds that we, at the time we were developing the budget, did not know would be ongoing. So we had to reduce the budget for that. And then there's what you've heard of the fiscal cliff, and that is the end of the ESA money coming in. So that's what you're seeing going into 26, 25, 26.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will see you on June 26. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Great. Next, we're moving into other action items. I'd like to welcome Jill Coyle to discuss our property and casualty insurance renewal. As Jill's approaching the podium, I wanted to inform the board members, in case you're wondering why she's here. Usually, this is something that appears on our consent agenda. I actually moved it to other actions because I need to abstain from this vote due to a conflict of interest. So in case you were wondering that, I didn't know if you were gonna cover that, Jill. Sorry you had to stay later to do this.
Not a problem at all. This is an easy one and a quick one, and it makes sense to be on other action. So once again, good evening. Tonight, under other action, we have the district's property and casualty insurance renewal. As described in the agenda item, the district is one of seven school district members of an insurance pool named the Alliance for Liability and Property Services, affectionately known as ALPS. ALPS members have a pooled loss fund to pay property and liability losses and claims up to a certain amount. The member districts cooperatively purchased traditional insurance to cover larger losses, which I believe Corey is where your concern about a conflict comes with traditional insurance carriers. The cost of participation in the pool is determined annually, and advance notice is required to leave the pool. The cost of the current package before us tonight is $2,074,057. That's approximately a 16.6% increase over last year. That increase reflects the ongoing hard nature of the insurance market, particularly for school districts. And it's coupled with increased property values, driven primarily due to the increasing cost of building replacement costs. Coverage lines covered by the package includes property, liability, auto, crime coverage, excess property and liability, errors and omissions, boiler, pollution liability, and cyber liability. With that, the administration seeks the board's approval of the insurance package for an additional year and to authorize the administration to bind coverage. Thank you.
This is an action item. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion by Bianca and a second by Joel. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? The only thing I wanted just to add is that, yes, I will be abstaining from this vote tonight. Jill mentioned some layers in the pool. One of the four layers is related. My primary employer covers that layer. So I just felt I should abstain from this vote. So that's why I'll be abstaining. With that, we had a motion by Bianca, a second by Joel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and one abstention. So that passes on a 6-0-1 vote.
Thank you.
That brings us almost to the end of our agenda. Are there any school board members with updates they'd like to share tonight?
Becky?
I would just like to really thank, because it's their last board meeting, Tom Peterstoon and Sally Soliday for their unwavering support for the last, I think Mary said decades. Well, come on. I mean, did she say like, I don't know, what's the other one?
Few weeks.
Yeah. Sally, you always impressed me with your soft-spoken leadership and your dignified style. And you are well-loved by everyone in the district, and we will miss you terribly.
Tom, I've spent a lot of time, I was gonna say, I've spent a lot of times in rooms with you, but that sounds kind of creepy.
He's the head of HR.
Yeah, I know. He's the head of HR. I shouldn't have said that. But as we have, as you have been here for decades, I think Mary said that to you in the same decade, I've been here that long also. And we have done more work together through so many negotiations processes that are not easy. But you always work through them with a smile and with dignity. And if you have any other crosswords, they're down in your truck on the way home. And I always appreciate that. You keep people on the even keel. You always work with people in a fair way. And I don't think, you know, that's a gift, and you will be missed. So thank you so much, both of you, for your commitment to District 196 and to our kids, and to making sure the ship runs smooth. Like I said, you will be missed. So thank you. It's been a pleasure. The other thing that you will be so lucky, if you go to tomorrow on June 13 at 4:30, the Irish baseball team is seeded number one in the state, and they play at CHS Field at 4:30 tomorrow. So go wear Irish gear and be a super fan.
Super fan. Love it. Superintendent Krieger?
Afternoon, Nate.
Okay. I just have a couple updates. One, reminding everyone to tune in to our webpage on a regular basis to hear more about summer learning opportunities for students, and also where they have access to free meals throughout the summer. But before we end, since we are bidding people adieu this evening, I cannot help but ask the person literally behind the curtain to come out and be recognized. Susan Poole has been with us for 26 years, and she is the one that keeps our board meetings running. She has the public access. She works with our websites, and she's just an amazing person who is always, always bringing a smile to all our faces. So thank you.
That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved?
Second?
Motion by Suchin and a second by Art. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
That is a 7-0 vote. We are adjourned.